Call to order our regular meeting of the Beverly City Council Monday, September 21st, 2020. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames?
Yes.
Bellman? Flaherty?
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Here.
Luthman?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Lutondo?
Here.
And Guanci?
Here. Councilor Hausmann, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, indeed, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you to Councilor Rand for filling in in your absence last week. She did a good job. So I have to read my note. I always want to forget these, but I won't tonight. Script for remotely conducted city council meetings, Monday, September 21st, 2020. Confirming member access. As a preliminary matter, this is Paul Guanci, president of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the city of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I am confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Everybody nod. Excellent. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have all been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does not have public participation. We do not have any public hearings tonight. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you are participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking has finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22, that we all know by heart, of the rules and regulations of the Beverly City Council. Rule 22, all subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation, and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed and subcommittee actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand and signed by a majority of the councils of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any matter, subject matter, may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration thereof in a vote thereof. However, if the council may by majority vote, order any matter pending for a subcommittee to be acted upon the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or to be forthwith returned to the full council. So for those of you that are joining us for the first time, this is where we take everything out of committee and vote it out on the floor. So I need a majority roll call vote on that. So Ms. Kent, could you please do that?
Ames?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Lutondo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to take the agenda a little out of order this evening. So I am going to start by going to Dr. Kurt Steinberg, president of Montserrat School of Arts, with an update as to how things are going this fall. And he's joined, of course, by Joe Broderick, who served as the right-hand man/woman of Montserrat College for, gotta be over 20 years now, correct, Joe? Excellent, thank you. Dr. Steinberg. Oh, I can't hear you. Dr. Steinberg, can't hear you. Joe, on it. Not yet. He's gonna check out and come back in. That's good. While we're waiting for Dr. Steinberg, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our previous meeting, which was held on Tuesday, September 8th.
So moved.
So moved.
And a roll call on the minutes.
Second? Ames?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yeah.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausmann?
I'll abstain. I was absent.
Rand?
Yeah.
Lutondo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Steinberg, we're back.
All right.
Can you hear me now? We can hear you, loud and clear.
There we go. All right, well, I just wanted to say thank you for letting me get in front of the city council. And again, wanted to thank you so much for the, all the efforts that you make on behalf of the citizens of Beverly on a daily basis. And want to thank you, want to let you know that the college and the college community are very grateful for everything you guys do every day. And we hope that we are good citizens as well in the community. It's incredibly important for us to make sure that we are also doing the right thing every day, because we know that we're a part of the city of Beverly. And we know that because you guys are incredibly welcoming. It is an easy sell. Couple of things real quick I just want to let you guys know is that, well, first of all, I, as of July 1st, entered my third year as president of Montserrat College of Art. So very excited. It has gone by in a blaze. Unfortunately, in a, for bad reasons, since March, but we've all been dealing with that. I want to let you know, we welcomed 360 students to campus. We are down about 3.5% on our enrollment in total, but our colleagues are actually down by 12%, 22%. Most art and design schools are down by quite a bit. So we're actually very happy in that regard. We are 75% women. So I always say that we are predominantly a women's college, and we have to do better in that area, especially when it comes to women's issues and advocating for women in the arts and design. Just a big thing that was part of our strategic plan, which we actually passed in April, which is part of our diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives that we've started as well. 47% of our students are in Massachusetts, 28% in other New England states. And I'm going to give you a little roll call of some of the other states that we actually have a pretty good amount of students that are coming. Arkansas, California, Delaware, Florida, Maryland, North Carolina, New Jersey, New York, Ohio, Pennsylvania, South Carolina, Texas, Virginia, and Washington. And we have international students from the Bahamas and Japan as of this semester. But they are not on campus. They are all remote. Our international students unfortunately could not get visas from the State Department. But that is an issue that actually all colleges are having, unfortunately. We, we, I was able to talk to Councilor Rand, Councilor Ames, and City Council President Guanci over the summer, letting them know about some of our plans. If you go online, you'll actually see our reopening plan along with the updates. So everything actually is online for anybody to see. We also have published, and will continue to publish when we have enough data, all of our testing results. So we actually have a dashboard that is being used by many of the independent colleges in Massachusetts. So we're, so you will see that as of right now, we have zero positive cases as of the opening of college. We have a second round of testing that is actually occurring right now. It started today and will finish in the next few days. In that second round, we are testing again all residents. So every single student that is living on campus, which is about 80% of our students, are being tested. And we are also testing any faculty and staff that are on regular contact with students. And we have also made available on a voluntary basis all off-campus people who do come to campus on occasion. And we are also pushing our off-campus students to please participate as well. So just to let you know, we are making sure that we get as many people as possible during these processes. We feel that we're in a good place when it comes to tracing if there is an incident on campus. We have two standalone houses at our residence halls that have been set aside for isolation beds. So they're actually not connected to anything. They're just standalone beds that are for isolation purposes. We took those offline. We also de-densified our housing on campus by about 10% and did get some extra apartments in the canvas building on Rantoul Street for that purpose as well, to spread people out as much as possible. The apartment-style housing actually allows, unlike other schools, we don't have a dining hall. So the common areas, bathrooms and kitchens where transmission can be relatively high, are actually pretty contained within those areas where six to eight students really, we know, are occupying that space. And when we get anything that potentially is a positive, we quarantine that apartment. That door is shut, and we don't let them leave until we resolve that issue. We've had to do that a couple of times, and knock on wood, have not had a positive in any of those occasions. But it tested our resolve. Any student that violates the community compact, which they had to sign, which also staff and faculty had to sign, which is a part from the student conduct pieces they have to sign as well. It's additional information. We have actually, when there's been violations, and there only been a few, have come down in student conduct on them swiftly to send the message that this isn't a joke and this is something we're taking very, very seriously. I have, in all my communications, both verbally and in writing, I have been making a push of the fact that we must be good neighbors, that we are members of the Beverly community, and we need to keep everybody safe, not just our community but our surrounding space, because we're not just Montserrat. We're also Beverly and Salem as well. So that has been a message that has been very consistent in anything that we talk about. 20% of our classes are actually being taken online this semester. And lots of our students are starting to opt for that option here and there. We also are doing in-person, but in a socially-distanced, responsible way in order to accommodate the larger classes, which for us top out at 20 people. We have actually leased the Cabot Theater. So those 20-person, 20-person classes are taking place actually in the Cabot. So we're very happy with the Cabot Theater and Casey for their partnership with us. We're paying them rent as well, so trying to support them as a fellow art and culture entity in the community. Each student was called by a member of the academic staff over the summer, and we have thoroughly gone through their course schedules, and we made adjustments where needed. That's the greatness of being a small institution by design, because we were able in 10 days to talk with each and every student and give them academic counseling. So we're pleased with that. The Broad Institute is doing our testing. We have done that through AICAM. This is the Association of Independent Colleges and Universities in Massachusetts. And all of the things that we're doing are based on the guidance of that group. So we're getting our guidance from Partner Health and Tufts Medical, as well as a number of medical people within that entity. A big thanks, honestly, to Governor Baker, who actually, the Commonwealth put a considerable amount of capital investment to the Broad Institute, which has allowed the testing to occur for all the independent colleges in Massachusetts. We also have a phone app where all students have to check in every morning. If they don't check in for a few days, they get a call from our nurse and our medical people asking them what's going on. Also, if they aren't, if they fill it out and the app tells them not to come to campus, we follow up also with a phone call to find out if everything's okay. And we've been doing a good job, I think, of keeping up with that as well. Wanted to also let you know that we will be holding voter registration events on campus. Our first one is tomorrow. So it is something that we're working on as well on campus. And we have reached out to the Beverly Police Department, and we're hoping that we can have a representative from them come to campus and talk to our community as well, because we also know that we want to be more connected to the community, understand what's happening, and keep our students safe and understand what's happening in Beverly. We also wanted to let you know that we want to and have started to be more engaged with the Human Rights Committee in Beverly. And we're also starting a committee, which will be of three staff, three faculty, three students. And their main objective is to find ways to be more connected with community organizations in the city of Beverly. So we have started that. We've started to recruit members of that moving on. My last item that I just wanted to let you know is that at academic convocation, we read out loud a land statement that we adopted, which talks about the fact that we are recipients of land that was occupied by Native Americans before we came. And we also call out the injustice, we also called out the injustices of that relationship that continues to this day and our need to be more proactive in that space. We worked actually with the Beverly Historic, so very grateful to them for helping us with the accuracy of that statement. And we also worked with the Native American Museum in Rhode Island to do the primary research. So these are things that are important to our students and things we do. The last, absolute last thing I want to say is a big thank you to the Beverly Public Health people. They couldn't have been more helpful, continue to be incredibly helpful. We couldn't have reopened in a safe way without them. And I just want to make, let you know how grateful we are. Our nurses, very grateful, has a very strong relationship with them. And they're always available, and they've just been incredible. I know that they aren't in all communities, but I can tell you that in Beverly, they've been absolutely spectacular. So thank you very much.
Yeah, Dr. Steinberg, just to follow up on that, it's amazing the work that our Board of Health has been doing the past about six and a half months now in doing it all with such a small staff. They seem to be everywhere all day. And not only with COVID things, they still have to keep up with their regular work also. They do a great job, Mr. Burke and his team. Does anybody have any, do you mind taking a few questions, Dr. Steinberg?
Absolutely, not a problem.
Any questions? Councilor Ames?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Dr. Steinberg, for taking this time to explain how your reopening plan has been. This is more of a statement. First, I have to say, I live pretty much in the middle or on the edge of a lot of the Montserrat housing. And it's a pleasure. It's really a pleasure to be in the neighborhood. And secondly, I couldn't be more impressed with your thoroughness and your transparent manner as you've worked through this process. I really appreciate the fact that you reached out to myself, Councilor Rand, and President Guanci at the beginning of this. And I just, from the bottom of my heart, I wish you all the best. I hope that you're able to run a really wonderful, fruitful, safe semester here in Beverly. Seriously, you've done wonderful, wonderful work.
Thank you, counselor.
Anybody else? Counselor Brady's?
Thank you, doctor. That was very comprehensive. And I'm wondering, first of all, to see the students walking around downtown again in smaller groups as they're being oriented is not only just energetic, but also a sense of normalcy coming and returning back to downtown. It was so comprehensive what you said. I'm wondering, are you talking to either, you know, some of the other local colleges, Gordon, Endicott, in sharing best practices? You know, how was that going on? Thanks.
Yeah, I'd say, so the bigger conversations every Friday for, I lost how many weeks we've been doing it, is all the presidents of the private institutions in Massachusetts actually meet and talk. All of our testing protocols, as well as our tracing protocols, were actually based on a committee that was put together. Dr. Johnson, who is a medical doctor and is president of Wellesley College, was the chair of that group. And that's where the Partners Health and Tufts people were part of that. So everything we're doing is high level and very professional. And the same things we're doing on our campus are what Boston College, BU, WPI, all of those schools are doing as well. And I have been in constant contact specifically with Dr. DeSalvo, Endicott College, and Montserrat, not just at our level, at the president's level, but our staffs have been talking to each other. And in fact, we share responsibility about getting the tests to the Broad Institute. They, we agreed to share the courier services there. And I know that the two of us have changed notes where we were doing some rapid testing. He wanted to know about it as well, and so we've shared that information, but a very big even flow. Actually, I believe it just last week, we, it all runs together. Last week, Dr. Salv and I actually did a joint presentation to the Beverly Rotary. So we've been really doing things hand in glove. I've also been talking to President Lindsay at Gordon College. The three of us have made sure that our plans are very similar. So it's been really important, especially between Dr. Salv and I, that because we're both in Beverly, that our approaches are very much the same and in sync, and we've been learning a lot from each other.
Thank you, doctor. Did we get Councilor Hausmann? Oh, I missed Councilor Rand.
Yeah, she was first.
Yeah.
Thanks, President Guanci. Thank you, Dr. Steinberg, for being here today and for being such an amazing neighbor and leader. So much of what you said just checked off all the boxes that, of things I wanted to hear about, and also went beyond that in terms of your diversity and equity and inclusion initiatives. It's awesome just to hear somebody talk about land usage and giving proper, proper footnotes and proper documentation and really doing the research about whose land we are sharing and whose land we are originally on. Quick question. This is hopefully an easy one. How can we support you?
I think, just, I have to say that the, I think you guys have been always available. That's all I would ask, is that from a city council standpoint, when we reach out, we just are able to meet and talk through these things in an open and honest way, which we have been doing that. So I don't really have an ask. I just have a reaffirmation of what already is. And this, the city continues, the departments in the city again continue to be really incredibly good, good neighbors and sources of knowledge and information and help and assistance. So as long as we continue to do that, I think we're going to be in a very good place. So I would say steady as it goes.
Great. Well, we're lucky to have your experience here in Beverly. And I really am enjoying what you're bringing to Montserrat. So, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, counselor.
And Counselor Hausmann?
Good evening, Dr. Steinberg. Great to see you. And I won't belabor, I will simply second the compliments and the respect of my colleagues for your presentation and what you and the college do and what you bring to Beverly in all sorts of different ways culturally and economically. I have just a couple of quick questions, but I also just want to sort of put a little shout out to, to public art in Beverly that's flourishing with our downtown restaurants that have their outdoor dining. Certainly something that I'm sure resonates with the college and certainly for me, because it makes a difference, right, to have that public art as we go down the streets. So quick questions. One is, are you, I know that in the past, there have been some questions about housing insecurity for some of your students. And I wonder if that remains an issue or if there are any things that the council can do to help in that regard. And then the second question, I'll ask them both, and then just be quiet, is I'd like to hear a little bit more about the team effort, you know, around the faculty, staff, and students on anti-bias training and dialogue that you're having. Just be interested to know a little bit about what the structure of that is and what that work looks like. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you, Counselor Hausmann. One thing I'll let you know is there are a number of proud Montserrat alumni who actually are the authors of many of those paintings that you see on Cabot Street and murals, specifically Mike Grimaldi, who did the one right in front of Bonefish Harry's. So, and there's at least two or three others. So really, thank you. And we partnered with John Andrews and the Creative Collective in doing that, as well as Jim Wallace and Beverly Main Street. So very happy, happy to do that, be a part of that. The, so on the housing insecurity piece, it's, you know, it's, you guys are battling it every day. And in our space, because we house such a large percentage of our students, it's front and center for us. We are, based on most surveys, we are the cheapest bed in Beverly based on our current rent structures by a considerable amount. So this, which is why we are able to keep as many students in housing as we do. One of the things that I think is going to help us is that we are, you know, in a partnership with Peter Lutz with the space that's above City Eats. That'll be an additional 41 beds. That is not a net additional 41, so don't get too nervous. It's, what we, what we are doing is actually, we're going to be taking two leases at the end of this year, and we're anticipating moving those beds into that space. It's an upgrade in the quality of space. They're all apartments. There will be a new gallery in the lower level, and they will be ADA accessible, which was very important to me. The Village was the only place that we could say was absolutely ADA accessible. And so we worked with Peter and his architect to design these from the ground up. And so we're, we will let you know that they are ADA accessible. And there is actually, and you say, well, how? Well, he's actually putting, he was just putting the footings in last week for an elevator that goes into the first floor. So where I believe the taxi service used to be is on Knowlton, is actually the entrance, and will be the gallery that will be around the elevator, and that will take it up. It's also an opportunity for us to have swing space so we can take the best care of our current inventory of beds as possible in the summer. Because our summer, my hope is to get back to the busy summer that we usually have, and this will be a huge plus for us. And as we sort of look at international students to supplement, not in a large way, a very, a small complement that I think will lend to the diversity of the educational experience for everyone. It's also needed to build this, to build the space. They'll be open in May. And what's good about them from a housing and security standpoint is it's a 20-year agreement with Peter, and we know the rents for the next 20 years. So when we do our financial planning, there are no surprises. For me, that's like buying a property. In this case, Peter keeps ownership of the property, and we have a 20-year understanding of what the actual cost of per bed is, which is, to me, equivalent to owning it as far as financial planning is concerned. So those, that was our goal. And so we're very happy with that. It'll always be a challenge. It's always in the front of my mind. But I think that particular project goes a long way to solving some of our concerns. And again, also, I think renovates a space in a high-quality way in downtown Beverly at the same time. And again, also, I think renovates a space in a high-quality way in downtown Beverly at the same time. As far as faculty, staff, and students and diversity and inclusion, we'll let you know that I have a top-down approach. We engaged our trustees, actually, in a very good conversation facilitated by great people from Salem State. We've been partnering with their diversity and inclusion people. Just got off a call for some other things they're going to be doing with us. But the, the conversation with our trustees, we took a Saturday, and we spent a few hours to talk about systemic racism specifically in higher education. And how do we dismantle that at Montserrat? And trying to get our trustees to understand that is not, we're not talking about it because there's a problem at Montserrat. We're talking about it because there's a problem in the world. And Montserrat is part of that world, and we need to educate our students about to be good global citizens and how to do that. Because it's a problem in the world, it is a problem at Montserrat. No place is untouched by these issues. And so our conversation has started with the trustees. We have a great faculty member who's leading our charge, Ari Modford, who is an African-American artist and a Native American artist as well, and who hails from Rhode Island, has taught at Rhode Island College, has also held positions at Rhode Island Institute, sorry, Rhode Island School of Design, as well as other places. He's actually a fellow at Brown University this year, so proud to have him on the faculty. And he's going to be heading up senior seminars this year and doing programming on campus. He helped us actually with our land statement. So happy to have him as well. We are setting up, I think I talked about one of them, two committees on campus. Again, staff, faculty, and students. One of them I already talked about, which is Community Connections. And the other one is about holding us accountable to our strategic initiative of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And they'll be helping us with the kinds of programming we need to have on campus. They're also going to be a voice for setting and holding us to goals. And also, are we supporting our faculty, staff, and students of color on campus appropriately? And then when it comes to faculty, are we recruiting appropriately? Are we going out and making our postings available in a way where communities of color even have access to our postings and have the ability to even apply? I could tell you right now, in certain areas, we're failing, and we need to do a better job. So those are some areas that we're doing. We are also in the midst of putting together a bias response team and mechanism on campus. Just got done talking to my dean of students about that. We're hoping to have that in place in October. So there's a number of things. The last thing that I want to let you know about is, well, actually, the other piece that I want to let you know is over the last two years, the campus, through their visiting artists and their gallery programs, 30% of those programs were artists of color. And over 20% were LBGTQ+ artists. So I think we've done a pretty good job. It's a good base to build on. We can do better. But it's definitely a good place to start. The, so a number of things we're working on. I think we're also working on, so you know, one of our alums is actually a head of art therapy down at the New Bedford VA. And we've been talking with her potentially about doing some programming in the weekends for Beverly veterans. We're a little bit at the whim of federal government funding. So it hasn't started up as fast as we would like, but let you know that we, she came to campus, toured it. And we have a faculty member, Ethan Berry, who's already volunteered to lead those conversations. So want you to know that, in my mind, diversity is a big D. It's everything. And it includes also economic diversity as well, and those, and also those like the veterans who have served us and deserve some attention. I know a number of my students actually want to get to know that group a little bit better as they see them around. So we're trying to create access to them as well. And it's my hope, in the long run, to have more students that are vets on campus. The last thing I want to tell you as far as our diversity initiative with our trustees. When I came to campus two years ago, we had one trustee of color. We now have four trustees of color. One of them is Ken Turner. And I bring him up because I brought him on specifically because he is an over-20-year veteran of the Navy and was retired a captain and was in the nuclear sub-business when he was in the Navy. He's now the head of diversity and inclusion at Massport and was also in marketing and PR for Hallmark, as well as AOL Latino. So we're, is really, really glad to have him on campus and part of what we're doing. I bring him up only to show you the kind of caliber person we're trying to bring to the trustees and how serious we make the initiative. I could tell you, he is keeping us on our toes and accountable.
Thank you so much for your answer, Doctor. I, I'm not at all surprised, but certainly impressed at the thoroughness and the breadth of your response. And perhaps, I'd love to perhaps connect with you offline a little bit about, a little bit more about the training that, that the, you know, the group that you're talking about, to see if maybe that's something that we could in some fashion help incorporate through the city council. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Love to do that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Dr. Steinberg, thanks. You know that you're always welcome to come back. You don't have to come back just in the fall and the spring. Anytime something exciting or you need something, please reach out. And I don't have Ms. Broderick on my screen, but I'm sure she's there listening somewhere. So thank you also.
Yes. And she, before I sign off, I just want to publicly say, I can't do any of these things without Joe Broderick.
Of course.
30, 30-plus years of service to Beverly and to, and Montserrat College of Art. She is absolutely a gem and spectacular. So thank you so much.
I just got nervous that you were going to make the announcement that it was going to be here last year, so I'm glad you didn't.
I know. That's my worst nightmare.
Have a good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Communications from his honor, the mayor. Go ahead, Ms. Kent.
Order 198. Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request your approval to fund the Racial Justice and Equity Initiative for Beverly. As you recall, we collectively committed in principle to this initiative during the city council's fiscal year 2021 deliberations. This funding request will serve three near-term goals of the initiative. First, to provide training to city and school department staff, boards of commission, volunteers, and other stakeholders. Second, conduct an equity audit, which is necessary and considered a best practice for advancing our goals. And third, a full-time position to coordinate and manage this year's deliverables and work on long-range planning and program information. Our request is the city raise an appropriation of $100,000 to be placed into the executive department budget along with a transfer of $50,000 from the reserve for unforeseen. This will bring the total request funding level to $150,000 for fiscal year 2021. A public hearing is required prior to final action by the city council. I ask that you please take action on this request at your upcoming meetings. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hill, Mayor.
I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for that at 8:00 on October the 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
In Guanci?
Yes.
Order number 199. Dear Honorable City Council, I recommend that the city establish the Position of Sustainability Director to support and guide Beverly's many sustainability efforts. Chief among those to aggressively combat climate change by mitigating municipal and citywide greenhouse gas emissions through an array of strategies. I have long believed in the value of and need for this position within our city. And I am pleased to have shared that we recently secured a three-year private donation to support this effort. This generous donation is structured to support 80% of the position cost in one year. 60% of the position cost in year two, and 40% of the position cost in year three. The intent being that in year four, the city will fully absorb the cost of the Sustainability Director within its operating budget. This $100,000 donation from the Monarch Group LLC will cover 80% of year one costs to fund this position. Mass General Law requires approval of the city council to expend this donation as extended by the donor. In addition, I request approval of a transfer of $15,000 from the reserve for unforeseen to cover 20% not funded by the donation. I request the transfer be placed into the executive office budget. The transfer will require a public hearing prior to final council action. I respectfully request you set the public hearing to take place at your next regularly scheduled meeting. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hill, Mayor.
Please refer to that, no, I'm going to entertain a motion to set a public hearing for that one for 8:15 on October the 5th.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
In Guanci?
Yes. Ms. Kent, let's go back to order number 190. The one we were supposed to have a public hearing for tonight.
Right. Order 190 and 191.
Right. 190?
Sure. Order 190 is the Community Preservation Committee proposed CPA fiscal year 2021 budget in recommendation for autocycle funding for Briscoe for Living in Arts. Well, they're separate, I'm sorry.
So we will...
The first one, Community Preservation Committee proposed fiscal year 2021 budget.
Right. So that public hearing was supposed to be tonight, as was the other one, but there was a glitch with the Salem evening news, not the clerk's office, the news. And it didn't get posted in time. So I would entertain a motion to reschedule that public hearing on order number 190 to 7:30 on October the 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Alden? Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
In Guanci?
Yes. And on order number 191, I would entertain a motion to set a public, reset that public hearing for 7:45 on October the 5th.
So moved.
Don't be shy.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
In Guanci?
Yes. On to the constables.
Order number 200. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation Mr. Brian Abelli at 24 Hunter's Trail, Sandwich, Mass., to serve as constable in the city of Beverly for the express purpose of serving civil process. Attached is Mr. Abelli's application, which has been approved by Police Chief John Lacher. Mr. Abelli's term will be effective from August 6, 2020, until August 6, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hill, Mayor.
I entertain a motion to approve that reappointment. So moved.
I think...
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kent.
Wait seven days, right?
Oh, right, a mayor's appointment. These are, I have the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 201. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation Mr. Peter Davico, 5 Brookhead Avenue, Beverly, to serve as constable in the city of Beverly for the express purpose of serving civil process. Attached is Mr. David Davico's application, who has been approved by Police Chief John Lacher. Mr. Davico's term will be effective from August 6, 2020, until August 6, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hill, Mayor.
Please refer to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Communications of applications and petitions.
Order number 203. Application to sell Christmas trees and wreaths at 294 Elliott Street from Mr. John Defenzozzo.
We're going to get you a lesson in, Ms. Kent, come on. Defenzozzo. Can we approve that, or do we need to send that to committee?
You can approve it.
All right, he's been for a number of years. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Happily so moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
In Guanci?
Yes.
Order number 204. Open, communications from the Open Space and Recreation Committee voted to re-designate Marilyn McQuory to serve as representative to the Community Preservation Committee.
I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
In Guanci?
Yes.
Order number 205. Application for two new cars for a livery license at BAT Enterprises LLC, 495 Elliott Street in Beverly. And I did invite him here tonight. I don't know if he's on the line, though.
And his name is?
His name is, good question. Gabriel. That's him.
No, that's not her.
No? Him. Um, wait a minute, one sec.
She's a principal.
Sorry. It's Fabio, Fabio Etsi.
And he's here?
I invited him here. I want to see him here.
He's here? I can't...
I'm here. Hello?
Okay, he's here.
Hello? I'm, I'm here. I can barely hear you guys.
There you are. One, two, three.
Hello?
Yes, we are.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. What are you doing?
Hello?
Hi. I can't wait to go.
I'm going to hear it.
All right, you want to...
Hello?
Hi. Mister? Mister President, maybe you could remove him from the meeting and have him call back? Maybe we could get him back in the chair, perhaps?
Yeah, yes, Kent, will you do that?
Kick him out and have him come back.
No, bad kicking.
I know. He'll come back. We're going to approve it anyway. All right, while he's trying to call back, let's go to motions and orders.
I think we lost Ms. Kent temporarily.
All right. Is anything you want to talk about her while she's not here? Christine, are you still here? Don't tell on me. I'm just kidding. Lisa Kent, join.
I kicked myself out, sorry.
All right.
Did he come back? No?
No. Motions and orders.
So what are we doing? I didn't hear what we were doing with him.
I'm going to give him another minute. Let's go to motions and orders, please.
Order number 174. Ordinance amendment, vehicles and traffic, section 240-41, parking prohibited at all times. And that is the second reading, and it was in the paper. In next reading will be October 5th, the final, and final passage.
Okay.
That's all I have to do to work.
So that's all we have to do?
We have to do what we commit.
All right. Well, we have to vote on it tonight, the second reading. So question comes on the acceptance of proposal and the adoption of the ordinance. So I need a roll call on that one.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
In Guanci?
Yes. Are we comfortable on, on the application for the two new cars for livery license, BAT Enterprises LLC, 495 Elliott Street?
Mister President, this is Councilor Hausmann. Mister President, this is Councilor Hausmann. I, I read the, the application thoroughly. I, I'm satisfied that it meets the criteria and, and would be appropriate, so I would make a motion to approve.
Excellent. How about a second?
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rattando?
Yes.
Guanxi.
Yes. Do we have anything coming out of committee this evening, Ms. Kent?
Order number, yes.
Reports from committees.
Order number 185, communication from the mayor, appointment for Human Rights Committee, Mr. Paul Goodwin from 27 Michael Road.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rattando?
Yes.
Guanxi.
Yes.
Communicate, this is order number 188, legal affairs, reappointment of Labor Representative Housing Authority, Mr. Bruce Abbott, and this, the mayor wants to withdraw this application.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
Ames?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rattando?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes.
Order number 195, application for the secondhand junk dealer's license for Alina Redmira from WKND LLC 261 Cabot Street. I also invited her as well, again, this week.
Where is she?
She wants a junk dealer, secondhand junk dealer's license. I'm not sure if she's here.
It's not a, it's not a renewal?
It's not, no.
All right, so it doesn't look, what's her name again? I'm sorry.
Alina Redmira.
Well, I think our, our livery guy came back. We should let him know that he's, he got approved.